You'll give us wisdom. Father, give us temperance, give us the ability to make hard decisions, to make routine decisions well. Thank you for the blessings of this day. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the honorable religious standards, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brad. We got a, this is the public comment period, so we don't have a public hearing tonight, so if there's something you wanted to discuss, now's the time to do it. So you got three minutes? Just come up to the podium there. If nobody does, go on, just keep on rolling. Alrighty. Alrighty, so we got a consent agenda. The minutes from those meetings are on there. And then number six, Stallings District S, which is exciting. Anybody have any amendments or changes to the minutes? Questions?
No, sir.
Alright, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Shoal.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Alright, reports, David and I just came back from the Historical Committee. And Lori, that's right, and she's on the Historical Committee. They dedicated a historical site, Blair Mill Park, Blair Mill over by the Divide Golf Course. So if you're ever riding by the Divide Golf Course on Stevens Mill Road, you'll notice there's a historical marker up there. And if you get a chance, pull into Divide Parking Lot and read it. So a little bit of history about our town, so it's pretty exciting, so. Alright, Graham, anything for us tonight?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Lori?
No.
Steven?
Just kind of got back into the groove, was finally able to make it to the WMA meeting. So I do have a couple of items there, and just a reminder for this group that the WMA meeting is here for April, so that'd be the fourth Thursday of the month. So, and for those that don't know, WMA is kind of, all the city's on the western side of Union County, so, where we get together and discuss kind of different things that impact kind of the western side of the county.
Alright, well, thanks for representing us on that. David?
Nothing this time.
Hey, Brad?
No, sir.
Alright, Alex, anything for us tonight?
Yes, sir. One, several quick items. First, from Chief Franks.
Counsel, I just wanted to give you a quick update on our Kalia accreditation process. If you recall, three years ago, the council approved us moving forward with that. We have, we are, we are almost done. So, April 22nd through the 24th, the assessors will be here onsite for two and a half days. We've met the 183 standards. We've proven that we're doing them and we're meeting them, and they will be here to, onsite to interview officers, command staff, the town manager, and other surrounding agencies to ensure that we are actually doing what we say we're doing. So I just wanted to give that update. Again, I appreciate the council's support for having us move forward with this, this process. Any questions?
I just want to say, former Mayor Linda Paxton will be very excited to hear about it. She pushed for this long and hard, a long time ago, so appreciate y'all's work on it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor, the last staff report is coming from Mr. Parker.
Counsel, hopefully everybody had a good weekend. Just wanted to give you a brief update on sanitary sewer capacity. Staff was hoping to apply to Charlotte, Charlotte Water's Capacity Assurance Program, their CAP program, that basically gets us our foot in the door and says, "We're interested in obtaining capacity through Charlotte Water down the road," just to get in formally in their waitlist so they can incorporate our, our request into any future design projects, CIP projects for that. I mentioned we were hoping to do that by June, but we met with Kim Lee Horn, our consultant, who's, who's helping us facilitate these conversations, and we think it's a good idea to hold off until about August, because with that, we'll have more advancement in Planning Department's Silver Line Integration Study, and with that, looking at TOD overlay, implementing a TOD district in that area by the hospitals. So, a reason for delaying a little bit is just to get a better idea of densities and uses, so we can give Charlotte Water an accurate number to design off of. So ultimately, just a two-month delay in applying for that Capacity Assurance Program. And that doesn't delay anything for Charlotte Water, it's just, we just need a little more time to give them more accurate information. So, the ultimate timeline isn't really affected, we just want to make sure we're giving them accurate information. So I'd be happy to take any, any questions.
Did you happen to see the post from Melissa Merrill, you know, Union County Chair, about the capacity differential and what's been reported and what's accurate now?
I did not see that.
So I asked her to update it and bring us to our council's attention, since she's a Stallings resident, and so she's working on that. And so hopefully we'll have it soon.
That's great.
So the capacity was more than what was being reported.
Okay.
And so, we'll see. And then, I was talking to Bennett Thompson with Atrium.
Mm-hmm.
Is that your contact, or one of?
I've, I've worked with him before, yes.
Yeah, 'cause he said they just got him lining up the door around, out the door, just wanting to develop around the hospital, which we knew that would happen, so.
Right, right.
So hopefully they're communicating with you and Max, so they're not, okay, so.
I haven't.
Well, when I talk to him, I'll tell him he needs to coordinate with y'all, not me, so. Alright, any questions for Kevin?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I did want to introduce a, go ahead, sir.
Oh, no. I was gonna throw it to you and say, I thought we had some really good news earlier this week.
We've got some great news this week. I wanted to introduce our new finance officer, Ms. Jessica Williams. So she goes by Jessie.
Come over here, Jessica.
Hello, good evening. Glad to be here.
Welcome to our town. I can't remember your resume. Where did you go to school?
I went to school in Winthrop, or at Winthrop in Rock Hill.
Oh, okay.
So, not too far.
Alright. And are you a native of Rock Hill, or?
I'm actually from York, so York County, but not too far from Rock Hill either. So I haven't ventured too far from home.
Right, okay.
So, I was in Gastonia before here, so I've stayed around the area, so glad to be here, though.
Thank you.
So today's your first day?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, well.
She said she was glad to be here. So, yeah, it's her first day.
I was gonna ask, do you find any money?
Lots to learn, you know, but we'll get there.
Alright. Any questions for?
We'll save the questions for the, mercifully know, yeah.
Alright, well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Alright.
I don't want to diminish that good news, but what, the other good news?
Oh. P3.
Yeah, so it turns out it's much ado about nothing, which is great, but it did, it troubled us for a little bit. So, we'd heard from a DOT representative that the Potter Pleasant Plains Intersection Project, the one that we've been battling, I guess for lack of a better word, to get done for over a decade. We had heard that the bids came back high, that they were delayed, and so the project was delayed basically indefinitely until they could find new funding. And when I followed up with my contact at NC DOT to get something in writing, get confirmation, get the facts, so that we could communicate that out to the public, that he was pretty much like, "What are you talking about?" We, I signed off on the lowest responsive bidder, it's moving forward, and so the Potter Pleasant Plains Project is moving forward as, as we all understood two weeks ago.
To start when? Remind us of the?
It's been bid out. I think it'll be, Kevin, do you recall the exact date?
The date of availability is June 1.
What does that mean, availability?
That's when the contractor is, has to be available to start the project. Ultimately, the June 1 starting date.
Once we get some more information, as we get closer, we can do some public communications out to kind of let people know, because that is such a key intersection, right? And there will be a, there will be detours and things like that. The engineers who designed it said, "Alex, it will make the traffic a little bit worse," right? When they have the detours, obviously they're under construction in the meantime, but once it gets done, it'll, it'll seem that much better.
What's the term? Summertime starts good, but is it, is it a short school summertime construction project, Kevin, or is it extending the school year? Is it a while?
I believe they said 18 to 24 months.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's from, that's from start to finish, right? So it won't be like active, complete, full-on what you think about when you think construction, but it's gonna be a longer construction. You look at that intersection, and it's like, little itty-bitty intersection, what, how could that take so long? That seems like a weekend job, but it's a lot more complicated just because of the utilities and number of issues that are there, as well as accommodating the existing traffic. So, we appreciate the board and the public's patience as we work through those improvements.
Yeah, and Alex is being kind. I was the one that reported that the project was being delayed, because I had called Brett about a signal at Laurie's Road at Ottawa and Stevens Mill was being delayed, and he said, and then he tells me, "Oh, by the way, Mayor, the projects came in way over budget, and we're gonna have to delay it. I'm gonna put out a press release." So, I called Steven.
Which, which my wife said I was not in a good mood the rest of the night.
Yeah, so I hated to do that, but I wanted to get that in here as soon as I heard it from the Division 10 engineer, and then, and then Alex calls me up and said, "It's Sean, it's signed off, and it's a go," so I'm glad it happened, but, but I apologize, Steven, for giving some gray hair there.
You'll have to, you'll have to apologize to my wife.
Okay.
It's all good, man.
Alright. Any other department? Eunice, you got anything for us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alrighty. That'll do it. So we got our agenda approval, so the one item that, that was discussed about adding it to the agenda was the LOIs from, for the John Deere property. Alex informed me that the broker, Matthew, is not gonna be here.
He's unavailable tonight. My apologies.
So he's not gonna be here tonight to answer some of the questions. So, do y'all want to continue to discuss it, or you want to table it till he's here?
I'd like to discuss it, because what I understand, the outcome of the discussion would be, would be simply understanding the LOI and communicating back to the other side. I'm speaking of the one with the Armored Cow Brewery, and I think the church who's here has received comments from us. I don't think the other side has, and they're not like there's two sides to this debate, but I, I think we all, if we are capable.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I've, I've read it, I'm, in fact, I'm fine just to make the motion to just do that, send it back to the other side for comment, without a big discussion, unless y'all have questions about it.
Alright, so we'll put it on the agenda, so.
Yeah, that's probably.
So somebody, Brad, can you make the motion?
Yeah. So Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with one addition.
Make it 3A.
Item 3A being LOI for whatever the address is, 2725 Old Monroe Road.
Okay, we got any other changes? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of 3A LOI discussions?
And I apologize, Mayor. Alex, didn't you, wasn't there an item you wanted to add?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Hall. Would ask we add an agenda item related to powder coating, some of the civilization.
That's right.
Equipment, as it relates to the Old Monroe Project, please. Thanks.
Alright, let's make that 6A.
Okay, so can I, do I amend, do I amend the open motion of adding 3A?
Go ahead and vote on that, and then do another motion.
Alright, so vote on the first.
Okay, well, just vote on adding 3A. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it.
Yeah, we're just talking to each other, that's.
Powder coating?
Yeah, so making a motion to approve the agenda with a new addition of item 6A powder coating for traffic signals.
I'll second.
Motion I second by Mr. Ayers and Mr. Richardson. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Alrighty.
There we go.
Alrighty, as far as the LOI discussions, Brad, why don't you kick it off since?
Oh, well, it could, it could be very short and simple. As I understand it, we've received copies of the LOI back from the retail tenant. We also received what would be an unsolicited proposal from the church, which we've both seen. We've sent copies of the LOI red lines back to the congregation. I don't think we've done the same to the retail brewery. So, I don't have questions about it necessarily. I just don't think the process should slow, so I'd like to make the motion to just do that very thing, send it to the representative from the brewery for feedback. It could be as simple as that, unless y'all have questions about the.
Or is there any thing in the LOIs that we need to provide feedback on to the brewery?
I think, I think everything that I talked, or I had questions on, were both LOIs, came back that it was, those would be handled as part of a rental agreement. And I think most of the things in the LOIs were, keep me honest here, was mostly the legal, because we are, of a municipality, there were certain, there was a lot of things in those LOIs that just weren't legal, based off the fact that it was a municipality. So, I, I'm, I'm good with my questions, 'cause everything that I asked Alex about, he said, "Oh, that's part of the rental agreement, or the lease agreement," so.
Anybody else? Okay, can I get a second of Brad's motion?
So my, my motion would be, my motion would be this, my motion would be to send the LOI to Armored Cow Brewery for feedback.
Second.
Direct the broker to do so, yeah.
Alright, y'all hear the motion? We're just gonna send the LOIs back to the broker, or to the?
If we, if we hadn't done it to the church, we'd be doing the same thing to the church. We're, then I amend my motion to, amend the motion to send back.
The broker did.
Both LOIs to the parties who sent the LOIs to us. That, that's simply what we're trying to do, to get feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I didn't mean to exclude you for that reason, but.
Yeah, we, we were told it wasn't the final, but it wasn't the final, so that's why.
Sure. But you did get a copy.
Asked for a copy and got a copy from, from the town.
Right.
That we were, that we were told it wasn't the final copy that we were to meet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and so since the broker's not here to answer some of our questions, so. So, alright, we got a motion and a second by Mr. Shoal. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Sorry, there's not much action tonight, but he couldn't, the broker couldn't make it, so. Alright, we'll move on to the North Carolina League of Municipalities' Voting Delegate Appartment. And let's see what we got to do here. I can't, let's see. And I recommend David Shoal be our representative. Alright, is there anything special here, David, we need to do?
Nope.
Okay.
So, just out of curiosity, a couple of sentences on what, I mean, you're already doing this, right?
Yes.
Okay, so what is it again?
It's North Carolina League of Municipalities. It's called City District. This one's up in Winston-Salem.
Okay, so they'll have a?
Gathering of municipalities that, a lot of learning sessions, speakers, keynote speakers, and the usual thing, it's great networking and good opportunity to learn how somebody else is doing their town.
Alright.
Anybody's welcome to go.
Yeah.
I mean, David and I went to one year, one year.
Yep.
I don't think I was the mayor then either, I can't remember.
I went last year, I think it was in Concord. I just did a day trip up and back, 'cause it was so close, but.
Yeah, it's in Winston.
This is in Winston.
You can go by Lexington Barbecue and get you a sandwich there.
Forgot about that.
Yeah.
Definitely will.
Winston or Winston-Salem?
Winston-Salem.
Oh, yeah.
So you're voting on the Board of Directors, is that what the vote is?
Yeah, it's the board, and I think there's one or two other things. I can't remember what they are.
I'm fine, I'm, thank you for doing it.
Yeah, can I, can I get a motion to appoint David Shoal as our delegate to the North Carolina League of Municipalities Board?
So moved, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Richardson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Thank you, David. Thank you, Brad.
Pleasure.
Alright, next up is Wesley Chapel Fire District. And so Alex is the man that understands this.
Big topic on the WMA discussion.
Do you, are you up to speed on what they want?
No.
Okay, well, he'll.
I sort, I sort of do, but Alex probably understands it a lot better.
Alright, so currently, so to avoid any confusion, nothing is changing service-wise. The county is just requesting an integration of three different fire service districts. In Union County, fire service is based on districts. It's kind of a, an antique, for lack of a better word, of a rural system, right, where you have a lot of different rural fire departments, and they have kind of areas that they cover. And as the town, or the county, excuse me, grows, they're kind of best grappling, and have been grappling over the years with how to best kind of adjust and deal with that. But here, this is just merely a administrative change. Looking at the map here, I'm gonna zoom out. So the area at issue is within the red line. This is the area they want to incorporate into one district. You can see, it's part of three separate districts currently, and the reason we're involved is this tiny, tiny sliver. You see that purple part up there? That's, that's why we're involved. And the service providers, my understanding, we're talking to the county, isn't gonna change, because we have that little part in there. They have to come and get our approval, and the approval of that resolution, in order to kind of move forward with the changes. I asked one of the, the county management team, who's a friend of mine, what would happen if we didn't approve it, and he said probably 80% jokingly, "Well, just let me know, I'd love to help you all set up your own fire department," basically. So, obviously, we don't want to do that. None of the insurance coverages are changing, none of the service providers are changing, or the service levels are changing. It's just simply combining it all into one district, from an administrative standpoint, a bookkeeping and accounting standpoint, and that's about it. So does that make sense?
They dissolve the other three and creating one new one, right?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Do you know why the, that little part of Stallings is in there and not in us, with us?
That's a good question. I wonder too, but I don't.
Has to do more with where the firehouse is than, because Stallings Fire Department has nothing to do with the town of Stallings.
When these, I, I kind of suspect that when these districts were set, maybe that wasn't in Stallings.
That's probably true, yeah.
Where, where is that little sliver? Is that down there John's place?
It is, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
By the, the Chestnut Apartment Complex. So you can see, here's Chestnut, and here's Matthews-Waddington. That's exactly right. Yeah, it's that, that, those townhomes that came, what, a couple years ago, front of the board.
Old Solace, is it still?
Yeah.
No. Solace is the apartment complex there. But that's separate from the, the townhome. That was, yeah. Oh, they did, okay.
They what?
That's good to hear that.
They what?
Can you tell everybody that, Matt?
Okay. They, they have lost their grandfather, or the best, excuse me, 'cause it's been over two years.
Okay, we'll talk to you after about that, yeah, thank you.
So if somebody in that little piece calls 911, do the fire districts say, "No, that's not us, it's them"? They know?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. I, I think from a service provider standpoint, that does it, nothing changes. It all stays the same. It's, it's literally just the various districts.
That little icon on there of the firehouse?
It appears so, yes, sir.
That's close.
Yeah. It looks like.
No idea. Burger, hamburger joint or something, I don't know.
Alrighty, well, thank you, Alex.
There's only one on there.
There's three.
Well, there weren't in the initial, when we first got it on.
Yeah, the way I look at it is, they were becoming more efficient, going from three into one, so my question was, the, the two other districts that are being dissolved, they had police chiefs, they had lieutenants. What are they gonna do? Are they gonna stay on board, and so, or are they gonna make the staff more efficient? I don't know. So, county commissioners will make that decision, so. Alrighty, so we gotta adopt this resolution?
Yes, sir. That's what we'd ask of you.
Do we need to read it, Ms. Attorney?
You can.
Okay, thank you. Alright, can I get a motion for the Town of Stallings Resolution consenting to, to the inclusion in the Wesley Chapel Fire and Rescue Service District?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Lori, second by Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it. Alrighty, Laurie's Road Roundabout with Graham, landscaping.
Alright, and I think we're gonna hear from Kevin that, what I was gonna propose is, might not be a moot point. So I know we've talked about with the other two roundabouts have recently been completed, I think one at the hospital and one, Brad, over in your district, doing landscaping, because NC DOT basically, I guess they just provide minimal amount of service to it, and it's just mowing. There's gonna be a roundabout at, in my district, and thinking, well, can we maybe save some money by going to DOT early and talking about doing installation of, you know, taking over the plantings, and maybe we'll have some greater sand and save a little bit of money. So that was my proposal, is just having the town staff talk with NC DOT about taking on the vegetation, the landscaping, similar to the other two roundabouts, but I think, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Yeah, at, at further glance, at four o'clock this afternoon, I realized that this is a concrete median, concrete island, so right now, there's not, no proposed vegetation at all to be in, in the middle there. I believe that's just because this is a smaller roundabout, and that concrete island would allow larger truck traffic to traverse it if needed to make those, make that roundabout motion. So ultimately, I believe that's, that's the reason why there's no vegetation in this, just 'cause it's a smaller, single-lane roundabout compared to the, the multi-lane roundabouts that we see at Chestnut and Matthews-Waddington and Atrium there. So, happy to take any questions, but, or any guidance y'all would like staff to pursue.
I'm, I'm wondering, when you're saying, "Go to DOT early," for us to take over the, and pay for the landscaping, or?
Yes, so that, that's what we've done with a few other roundabouts recently, but we did that after the fact, because we, we realize the level of care that DOT provides for it is extremely minimal. So I think, Brad, what you're saying is like, you had just overgrown.
They, they mow it twice a year, kind of maintenance, and it's weedy grass, so yeah, it's probably better that you don't have that, but now you don't have the opportunity to land, plant it either, right? It's just so small. One lane around, okay, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause it will be interesting, all the truck traffic that comes down Laurie's.
I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, only one lane there, that's gonna be tight.
Yep.
And is this the, did you say it's, it's made to traverse over, like trucks will drive over?
Essentially, yeah, this would act as a, obviously the dividing median for the roundabout, but also kind of a, a truck apron to.
Yeah.
They have to.
Well, yeah, allow them to maneuver through there a little easier.
Usually put a little grade there, so that people, other people don't.
Yeah, exactly. It'll, I'm assuming it'll be sloped. I didn't look in full, full detail at that, but yeah, usually those are, are sloped a little bit.
Well, they saved us $25,000, though, Graham.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions for Kevin on this? Graham, you okay?
I mean, I, I guess just if we hear anything, let us, let me know.
I mean, I guess just if we hear anything, let us, let me know.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, if, if they do put in grass.
Revisit that. Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Oh, are you up for the powder coatings?
I, I believe so. So this is following up from a report staff gave about two months ago that essentially NC DOT had contacted us and said, asked us if we wanted to pursue any signal betterments and pole betterments, pole upgrades. And in this case, it's powder coating for the Old Monroe Road widening project. And really, the only intersection that is relevant in this scenario is the intersection right here at, the proposed intersection improvement right here at Old Monroe and Stallings Potter Road. There's going to be four metal signal poles, traffic signal poles, and then there's going to be six metal pedestrian poles as well. And the cost to powder coat all of that is going to be approximately $3,500. Obviously, we saw about a fifty percent increase in the cost of powder coat between, over for that Chestnut Parkway Project, where I believe we were quoted about 2,000 and then ultimately it was increased to about 3,500. So I, I think a good conservative number to keep, to, to kind of plan for, for this project would be seven grand, just ultimately doubling, doubling the price that was proposed to us now. And so ultimately, just hoping to receive direction from a yay or nay blessing from, from council so we can get with NC DOT and say, yes, please, please incorporate this into the bid package. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Well, I certainly recommend it. And, you know, DOT dropped a ball at the, down about a hospital. We requested that and they just, that it certainly looks better. And that's just going to be a signature intersection. So any questions for Kevin? Comments?
Didn't they make that a roundabout?
I'm sorry?
Why didn't they make that a roundabout?
Can't handle the traffic.
Too, too much traffic, too much volume.
That's the point of a roundabout.
Roundabouts have fixed duration. Like you can only, you can't change how fast cars move through it with full signals. You can, over the course of the day, you can vary how long lights and traffic patterns. So you can actually move traffic better at certain times based on the traffic pattern.
I don't, I don't.
They, they ran a, they, they run analysis on it with computer software and they, you could see where it slowed down and it calls backups.
Agree to disagree.
Okay.
All righty. Any other questions for Kevin? Comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the inclusion of powder coating in this bid.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Mr. Shaw.
Second.
Second by Laurie. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Oh, I'm against.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I was looking at you. So we have all opposed?
Aye.
Yeah.
Want to pose, Mr. Hall? All righty.
You.
I guess we get paid full amount for only meeting for 30 minutes. But can I get a motion to adjourn?
Stretch it out.
Stephen said he's going to get his money's worth. He's eating all those chocolates up too.
That's right.
Oh, man.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Richardson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned. All righty.
I keep putting chocolates. I don't, I'm either eating or asking questions. So you got to, you got to pick your poison, man.
There you go.
Sorry, we need that after all.